Alright, here we are. What's up, what's up, what's up? This is a no delay stream, we're gonna be uh... Streaming a live uh... No delay study session, before uh the actual grind today. I will be grinding later. Um... Just uh... Just a quick uh... Oh, uh, okay, I... For a minute, I thought the chat was not working. Uh... Galindihizambacas, Galisperes, ApoloFC TV, Galisperesquecesena, Yasuelleni, Yasugabilodissa. What's up, Sergeant Pepper? Good luck, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll keep your good luck wishes for once the grind begins. For now, we're gonna be uh... Uh... Focusing on uh, on the 1650 uh... Big Fish tournament I played. I uh... Going to be reviewing everything. So uh... Let's get started. I'm gonna be focusing mostly on late gameplay. We'll be looking at spots. Fold. Two sixes, a fold. Three on the big blind. Fold. Have a ace ten. Seven bigs. Open. Have a flat. Bogger in pajamas with the 100 bits! Good luck today, sir, thank you so much, buddy. Thank you for the 100 bits! Wow! Nice of you, thanks a lot, man, thanks a lot. I think this is the first time uh... You uh... You ever speak in chat. It's good to have you with us. Um... Since you've been following since December 29th. How are you, man? Uh, we're go... Like I said, we are having a study session. No delay. Uh... So feel free. Uh, whatever you guys want to, you know, jump in, uh, give your uh... Your opinion about anything. Feel free. So, we opened from uh... Middle posi... late middle position. Hi Jack, I mean, cut off calls. This is the flop. Not the best flop. Uh, sometimes... Sometimes I see bad range here, cuz he's... Sometimes I just check fold. Don't remember what I did here. We do... we unblock hearts. Um... He does have some king x. That doesn't... that don't three bet, like king... King jack. And skin queen just flats here. Check, back. Two, feel more comfortable of stealing here. He calls. Another king. Check, bets. Yeah, that's interesting. Interesting. Uh... Kind of feel that this card doesn't change anything. To split with all the a. He have some a decks. Uh... But he has a lot of blocks as well. Do block nine, ten, but he could have like uh... Hearts. Don't uh... check back. Actually, check back the turn. It's a big bet though. Sure... Not sure why I made the call. He'd make it. Even though we do block nine, ten, that would be a good call. Wow! Like I would fold. Kind of felt that... Does... A bet, he's seven x, he does bet king x. On the turn. Again. Calls. Check, checks back. Good bet here, cuz he would continue with a lot of cards. Since I check, polarized. But I do check my queens. I check my kings. Check. Probably don't check aces, because I am blocking x. Definitely bet my a decks. Bets here, flop. So... Interesting sizing though. Like uh... He's attacking ace highs. I'm pretty... it's pretty... Pretty stunned, it's pretty uh... Obvious that I'm uh... That I have... but... I have an ace queen, his jack type of hand. Probably attacking those. What's up Trinity? Uh, Spreebro, I think he bets most king x on the flop. He could have seven, six, seven occasionally, maybe sometimes if he doesn't three bet. Nine, nine, ten, ten, yeah. But even though we do block bluffs, interesting. Think... like, ace ten is probably a bad hand. Need to call here. Ace jack, probably a better hand, because we unblock nine, ten combos. Well... Nice. You know, sometimes you make that call and you lose. Sometimes... Look like a hero, you know? As played, I think... Polarized. Like, we also beat, you know... Uh... Lots of low pairs. Cuz they're counterfaded. Trying to get... get it. Sometimes they do bet the flop. Right, we defend here seven, six. That... No uh... no backdoor flush draws. Check, cuz for the 50%. Good old, old 50%. This is a guy who uh... He betting a lot. Quite a lot. Fold here. Doesn't see bet a lot. Um... According to... so we're playing 20 uh... Twenty big blinds effective, according to uh... Re... raise your edge. Uh... King eight. Is a call, even king dudgev is a call versus a... Versus a two x open. Wow! Two call. Probably float. The king of labs here. Once. Versus a limp. I wouldn't mind to see limp here. Not deep enough to ISO. Okay, crazy. The reason I said that I wouldn't mind to see limp... Nope. I know I should be playing more... Bottoms. Fold with a... I don't play my button. Fold. 14 bigs, fold. In ducks. 14 bigs, king nine off. Cut off. Like even if we were 20 bigs... 20 bigs is an open. Have to fold versus a three bet. 14 bigs, I'm quite not sure for, you know... I do need some... I guess jamming isn't bad. Isn't completely bad. Have three players. And... Fold. A king ten. But even 15 bigs, I think it's a tricky chip stack. You guys think? Like, it's not 12. Not 11. 14.7, which is 15. Uh... I think it's a lot to risk jam. Cuz we could wait a couple of rounds for a better spot. Still have fold equity versus the other players. Guys think? And population, you know, versus uh... Cut off uh... button. They tend to call a little bit lighter. He's not folding duck. Not even folding ace nine. Or if he's folding ace five suited. Especially this guy. Go for the open. Cuz with uh... with 14 bigs, you can still open fold. Like, what happens if I open, guy three bets and this guy jams? I can still fold. And I still have the opportunity to uh... Find a better spot. But... It's probably... it's probably s... I... I probably called. Cuz I... I either jam or fold here. I don't know if late registration is... But I think I remember this. He called. So... In... sixes. But oh. Either jam, rejam, fold. Can just call here. Galostombanayodi. Galosolises. I think this is pretty bad. Don't know why I did. Rejam or fold. But it's interesting, uh, you know, the way he played it. And I can understand it. Uh... Cuz he doesn't wanna flat. Bite him also pen. Hand. Uh... He doesn't wanna jam as this guy wakes up with a... So he just three bets and this guy jams, folds. He's gonna get it in versus us. I think it's an interesting way he played his hand. I think it's... He played his hand the right way, I didn't. I should just fold to a rejam. Or... Either fold or... or just get... Why I called though? Why I did? But it worked out well, so... Position queen ten, 30 bigs. 50% open, 50% fold. According to raise your edge. Also open. Is stunned. Aims. Fold, oh. King. Um... Bigs. Two... two sizes up. The draws here. To have the range of fundate. Forward. Floating dead. Ah, another one. Ace nine now, 30 bigs. Two open, even though I could also fold this one. Because of the short stacks. Like, lots of rejamming. Lots of rejamming stacks. Also, I could just open two x here. When we do open this, we have to call versus I... Sure about this. All bigs, I'm call or fold. Makes the call very weird. Check. Ace. Didn't wanna rejam. Nine, aims. Check here, because of the spades, I could... I... Cuz as played, pick... pick my... Pick my three, but he doesn't bet uh... Safely. Assume that he doesn't have the spades. I re... I do represent. I don't really have to go big. Show any sign of strength. And three suited, the button, 30 bigs. Yeah. Uh... It's a fold according to raise your edge. Uh... uh... Range uh... ranges. Evolution, what's up? What's up? How are you? Minus. In a downswing? What do you mean? Folds, jams here. We, we, uh, trapping. Haven't been able to make final tables lately. Ah, you'll get there, man. Interesting, because he doesn't have calling range here. I think he, he only have traps. Again, it's an easy fold for us. But he has like king 10. Even folding 3. Folds. Since we have position over Not a bad flop. I could check back here, but I think I, I think I always try to Uh, the fact that this guy is also short. Uh, since I'm ready to get it in here, sometimes I just go up. Or just go bet small, get it in. Folds for us. Had to go down on stakes. I was 11, uh, blinds, no bag at 3. Oh. Oh, I know, I know how that feels. Yeah, it sucks when you have to go down, but takes, but takes a lot of discipline to do that. Oh, and you do it, I mean, you're on the right track. Interesting. That call here and one. Check. I just, I, I should fold here. Like, the best case scenario, this guy, uh, betting his in queen. He has 2 block, 8, 9. Has I 7. Claps or diamonds. 9. Oh, we have the best hand. Interesting how this guy just flooded though. Really interesting. Very draw heavy board. I don't know how this guy found the call out of position. I mean, he has more jacks than his king here, but The, the problem of calling, you know, 3.5 3.8 here, like a 50% is we will probably have face, uh, river bet as well. And there are a lot of cards we will hate. Like, we will hate a king, queen, ace. We hate 4, any, any clap, any diamond. No? Probably hate a 6 or a 7 as well, or a 10. And we will even hate an 8, you know? Like, even with, even when a 9 of, even with the 9 of hearts here, you can, you can, uh, you can still uh, lose, so I think I like my fold here, no? I like my fold. Like, what in the world? I mean, the, the, the obvious, uh, the, the only ha, uh, cards we expect to see on the river and still be okay-ish, yeah. Uh, it's probably a 2 or a 3, and in this case, he has a 3. What's up, YC? Yeah, I mean, he unblocks everything that he calls. Like, this guy has at this stage of the game, he has his jack, his jack off, uh, yeah. Sometimes his queen just calls. I would never imagine him to have. So this is definitely both, this guy's range. He has queen 9s, uh, he does have, you know, 10 9, I guess. Check. Uh, but I'm eyes. He does check twice. Or 5. 9. Queen jack. And all, all, all of this. So, yeah, surprised he finds a call here. Nikos, chérete, chérete. Kalostos, aristoia do follow. Kalosorises. But people are, they, 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 yeah, that's true, that's true. Good for us though, right? They turned out to have, you know. I think I made the fold, uh, here, uh, thinking about future game as well. Like, this is the best river. But it could be not, because yeah, now he has 2 pairs, like could have, you know, or maybe now he has straights, 2 block 8, 9, of course. Don't block 6, so do like my fold, so have the best. Jam. Rejam. What's up, Osalot? Session with the zombie? No, 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 this time I'm, I'm just doing, uh, just doing, uh, you know, I'm just studying myself. How you doing, man? 7 9 from the cut of 30 bigs. Uh, we could open, we could open. But we don't know, have information. And at this stage of the game. Had enough of it. Probably after. Probably after, I guess. Imp. Complete. It's top. Guy leads. Don't mind calling, but it's too big. Don't mind calling, but with this player to act. Fold, there you go. How? Happen? How this guy just this one? Legend. But both of them. Ah, this guy was forced, so. Go a couple of hands back. But I would Okay, this guy just opens, jams. We've seen him. But let's check out the range. Let's see if this is a call. We do have 2 players to act, so this all. Let's assume that he's jamming. Cut off. Say he's coming, all of the pair. All of this would Definitely. Kings. Cut. 9, check 9. Go. 9, 10, 8. Maybe 7, 6, go. 9, no. I'll also, I'm gonna give him a wide how well we perform with his 5 off. Still a fold, like a but we do need 43%. A 48%. I think considering that there are 2 other players back. The call. Like, small blind, this was small blind versus blind. Call. If we make the call here, uh, we need to win only 4 out of times we're good. You, you know. Probably ace 9, 8 ace 9 is a better one, because he dominate his really weave, tip well against his pairs. Immediately 53. Because we dominate ace 2, says, 2 ace 10. Tip well against Uh, yeah, this is, uh, not the, was it, uh, 2 days ago, the 1650, yeah. But sometimes I tend to avoid these spots, because they are very marginal, no? And sometimes I, I tend to limit variance in my game. I don't know if this is good or bad. But this is definitely something I'm doing. Stand up. Down. Oh. 3rd. Many big blinds, jack 8. This is actually a fold. I don't know why I opened. Supposed to open jack 9 plus fold. Probably because I tried to play It's a short stack here. You either, you either take a fold or add like this. Now, this is hypothetical spot now. Who I call if this guy jam? 12 bigs, what he's done versus an open. Doesn't have fold equity. What should coming? Coming all of his pairs. Coming eight, oh. Starting to raise your edge, though. When if he had, when if all blind versus. Button. Off. Button versus card of, right? Even if he was. Raise your edge says twenty, twenty effective. Because I value my stack more, but maybe I'm folding too much in this, and like thirty-eight, I'm. Like, raise your edge says, even with twenty big blinds, button versus card of, this is what you. Sometimes. Actually, no. Call fold ace three, ace twos. And you call, you call and call and then call a if. You go broke, but I assume, let's say. Can you jump this one? Jump all the ten x. We're, we're. So. Holding. Definitely. In in-game, I definitely fold, unless he has like seven bigs, eight, definitely. You guys think? A pair of sevens. Of shovings. Check. All fold. For us. Eighteen, twelve, five guy. One, uh, one hundred forty-three. I don't have a lot of hands on anyone. Uh, like, like. You want to analyze a player, you need at least one thousand hands. But one hundred, over a hundred, you get an idea, you get a, you get an idea. Like I have forty-one thousand hands on me, these are my numbers, forty-one thousand, wow. Aggressive. High in aggressive. Fold. The sake of refreshing our memory versus under the gun raise. Even though he's deep, right? He should, uh. He should opening six plus. Definitely a fold, like, we're playing twenty-five, let's say thirty big blinds under the gun, one plus versus. We are even folding sevens here, and sometimes. And starting to raise your edge strategy, thirty big blinds, not twenty-five, uh, with three bet fold eights. And size it down, three bet. You should start three betting, oh. We're shorter, we should. Smaller, they're going six, five, five. But we also go five point five with our hands to balance. It's a smart way to study these spots, you're getting jumped on eight to twelve, uh, big blind when you have like twenty. So common, I'm pretty much guessing, me too, me too. Uh, I think the, I think what I'm trying to do is, uh. Is just check their range. What would their jamming range be? And, uh, and have an idea, like if you study this spot and you have an idea what your calling range is. Like, for example, I think the best way to do it is IC Mizer, let's see. First, it's gonna give you, it's gonna assign them a. Range, let's see. Uh. Hand. That. Taste it here, right, and then. So we raise to twelve K, right? Raise to twelve K. The bottom. Jams, right? Let's see what IC Mizer, Nadoskius Pirusre, Remaxibnisaes. Look at that. Okay, this is ICM though, let's see his, uh, jamming. It says we just call stens plus, fold this queen suit. We don't. But this is IC Mizer, this, now this thinks that this is a final table, but we'll get an idea, we can, uh, we can play it with range. Right? I mean, look at the range that signs the, the range, definitely. Is. Jamming all of his pairs. He's also jamming ace jack of. Not folding ace. Coming. That. Probably jams. Times. Jams is seven suited. That. Over fifty. He jams ace five suited. Or. And. Does jump king. In jugs, so they definitely jams. That. Um. Gonna go for fifty percent, nine. Let me know if you want to, uh. Let me know what you think. Let me know what you think about the ranges that I assigned to them. And gonna go for fifty percent ace nine off. Very low frequency. What do you guys think? How does this look? You think he's jamming king ten off? Low frequency? Five percent? They have a rate that we open widely. They, they jam every, else, maybe a low frequency. Doesn't have fold equity. Jamming, uh. Uh. Them to like lowest free, like ten. People do it. Like nine, ten. Have it. Take it. Very low. Right? How does, how does that look? Good. Calculate. It is the fault. With this, uh. We do call ace ten. But. Not plus EV. Mean it is, but. The nines. How can we fold nines on this spot? I mean, he's jamming all of the pairs, how can we fold nines? Maybe Ben can help us here. What's up, Ben? Ben, uh, we are, no, this is hypothetical, you know, I I took this opportunity, I just opened ace eight, twenty bigs. And hypo- uh, ace eight, hypothetically, this guy jams, this is not the final table, probably after late registration or something. But, uh, we are just wondering, how do you study these spots? I just put it on IC Mizer. But IC Mizer, uh, puts, considers ICM heavily, there is no ICM here yet. But how do you study this, like? And these spots are very, uh, common, like. Like. Sometimes we say, oh, well, if they jam, I have to call off, but do we? I mean, we just have eighteen, uh, nineteen bigs, we do have fold equity, right, he's not gonna be, like, we can still fold to, uh. Jams, the handout is not that good. But how do we study this? Like I assigned him, uh. Yeah, I assign, okay, how how about this range? What do you think about this range? It looks like, uh. Okay. Alright, how about this, how about this range? Very low frequency, like ten percent of these ones, fifty percent, twenty percent. Assume he does jam ace five suited. Rates and. Uh, I assume he does jam ace eight plus, and suited, jack ten suited. All his pairs. Over like fifty percent, king jack, queen jack of, ten percent, king ten, fifty percent ace nine, twenty percent. Ace eight, and low frequency of ace five. What do you think about this range, doctors? Also ensure there, there's no ICM pressure in the calculation. He stayed eight, oh. Oops. True. I think he never jams at eight, he folds. I assume Ben is typing. Reads, baby. I feel, feel, you know, field player, YC, a field player, I feel, I feel he doesn't jam it. Probably there is another range, but if you look at his range, eight, ace eight is dominant, odd. Bee versus pairs, and also only have like. Yeah, um, I'm not looking at the hand, you know, the ace eight, I'm looking at what range do we raise call? Exactly. Also, how do you, how do you, uh, sure there is no ICM? Like, how do I get the ICM out of it? Might flood aces, aces and kings? I don't think so, because he's like twelve, twelve big blinds, I I don't think he has a flooding range, does he? Lose a lot of our stack too, that's true. Custom turny. Up left, add. Two BB. Double to select. ICM. We go for two BB. He's gonna change all the ranges now, though? Is that all? No, he's jamming like. Then? Kips, right? So, uh, with this stack, make like. Seven thousand eight hundred... Bottom probably jumping ten percent. Right? What would you take out here? Do it. What would you take out? Take out ten nine suited? Low frequency, very low. Take ace eight suited, ace eight off? Yeah, can change. Yep, there you go. This, uh, this... There you go, that's much better. So... So you're saying ace six suited plus? Or just take out ace six? I think, I think he jams every... All his pairs, even doos. If you... Maybe he take all the ace eight. Jack off. Already have it low frequency. Lower it. Ten percent. Probably take out ace six, eight, eight. Jump three percent. Ten nine suited, very low frequency. A queen ten suited. Maybe we could take this down to like, uh... Thirty percent, say. Ten suited. King, king ten suited is a jump. Even ace seven suited. That's lower, into like fifty. We're down to fourteen percent. Ten percent is pretty tight. Definitely jumps. Off. I think this... Is reasonable. Calculate. Surprised why, how we call, but... Surprised we call ace ten suited, man. Really surprised. I'll be right. Is, is my stream freezing, or is it my laptop here? Population always on meteor site. Probably. I mean, I definitely don't think I'd call this. Doesn't look... Call fours? In... Big versus ace six? Still be called doos? Rather jump than... Like, now I'm confused. Now I don't have a clear image of... Spots. Like, if he jams for, for twelve bigs, I definitely fold. This spot. But here, it says we, uh... Make one... Big blind. Less than one action. I guess... Yes, this could make it a fold, like, uh... We go minimum one? We go for minimum one big blind? Recalculating EV you want by percentage? Say... Like raise your edge or different? Or just any spot for twelve big? Is ten to... Oh, yeah, ace ten plus. Like... Like, you're printing with pairs of even sixes or fives. I mean, this suggests that you rather have fives than ace ten. Than ace ten off. But, uh... You'd rather have sixes? No? Rather have... Aids? Of... Rather have tens than ace? Because, uh, you still have to hit... Pairs. Take ten percent of aces, right? So, called call and call ace nine suited. What do you mean? That we take ten percent... Of aces? So you mean we take off, take out aces? Do you think he, he has a calling range? Twelve big blinds? This spot? Does he have a calling range? Like, you're, you're on this spot. What do you call fault? What? So, ace twelve point two. Oh, here, yeah. Ten percent is one point. Anything that makes more than one point, call. Oh! Oh. So this is a clear fault. But we do call ace nine suited. Sacrifice the lower ten percent of range, because we as, we assume... Have an edge. Interesting. That's an interesting approach. Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a very interesting approach. Basically, what you're saying is that whatever the aces... Right? We take ten percent... Of this number here, so twelve point two... Two, right? And make this our calling range. Because we assume we have an edge. Um... We don't want, want to... Uh, just... Lose chips and flips. Generally, ten percent, very interesting. Nines. Doing something new. I like... I think IC-Mizer is very... It's a very good tool to study this. Now I do have an idea, like, we call fours plus. But even fours, I would fold. Fives plus, I would call. That is distinctly a call. Of sevens here. Oh, yeah. Down. Fives. Ah, interesting. So what do you do here? Can jumps, nine bigs. Don't have, we absolutely have no information on this guy. Right? What do you do with ace nine? Anyone wants to, uh... Their opinion? I'll be like, "I'm gonna take a shower then do some more." Thanks, buddy. Who has an opinion? I doubt. Add. Call. The Rangers. Again, so... Point nine? Oh, ace nine is a call. Can ace eight? Call all the suited. This? Not sure I made this call, to be honest. I did. Did. Subscribe to Stavros Pet. Rob Jenith Elasches, opos, OphiTex. Oh, fella, melo gypro. Eh, omos pezo mononline. Eh, palia, printokovid, pigen nakane, senna... Labaggy buch, epeza kana, life, ala, ochi voli sykna. Ala me boihi se ato, ganty... Piraka, piraka pia lefta, ta obia me boihi sa sto challenge, poegana, gita ebala mesas to online. What is hijack, uh, hijack jump range in IC-Mizer? Get out, thirty-three percent. Like... I think this is... I think this is crazy. Let me check, raise your edge. Hijack, ten bigs. So, raise your edge. Says... You should be jumping. Definitely, it looked crazy to me. This... This was true, then it blew my mind. Nine fives and nine sixes is all... Out. Don't know why IC-Mizer... Jumping. Also, the jack eight... Out. And these are out as well. This is the, this is what raise your range, raise your edge says. Jumping. Hijack. That case. Ninety. Still a call. Still a call. But now we do fold doos, ace doos. Like, I hate myself call with the threes. Hate it, call. But I, I could also find faults, depending on which stage of the game I am. Uh, if I am making this fault, I'm probably losing... How we should be... Other hand, you know... Variants, I think. So... We also call... Jack off. From, from nine point five bigs, did I leave it out? Oh, you mean, yeah, yeah, you mean, uh... Special from hijack, yeah, yeah, yeah. But you meant his, uh... But we do fold ace eight. Seven. Ace nine is too strong to fold. We're have ten bigs. Called. Now we have ten bigs, we have king nine. And we are... Middle position, I think this is a fault. Ten bigs middle position, what does raise your edge says? King nine. Oh, king ten is a, king ten off is a jump, king nine is a fault. Add to, uh... Add. Add to find out that ranges are... So I think this is an easy, I, I think, I think I defend here. The, the, the shorter you are, the more you realize your equity. You defend. So... Hmm, interesting. Have a gut shot and, and bunch of, uh... A bunch of, uh... Battle. I, I mean, we have battle flash draws. Flash draw and gut shot. Especially, uh, from under, I don't open, easy call here, yeah. I mean, you can check fault, check jump, depending on his, uh... Depending on, on his, uh... sizing. Takes back. Do check. Just check. Ace, we check, he bet, called. I mean, that was good for us, because we realized our equity one hundred percent until the river. That was good. Seven point three. Easy jump. Easy jump from the bottom. Yeah, I mean, we can even go as low as queen four suited here. Domination, nation! Are you ever do, uh, dunk jumping three and what? Uh, yeah, uh, when I saw the hand, I'm thinking, "Why lit here with the three?" But the thing is, we're so short that, uh... Pretty much have to raise and then jump whatever the river is. And, uh... He also has some, you know, traps. So I prefer to check, 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 and then give up. Uh... Like, if I, yeah, if I'm thirty big blinds, I'm definitely betting, uh, the three. And then betting big on the river. Uh, like, I could. And then betting big on the river. Like, I could do that. And if he hear a calls, you know, so be it. Uh... But he's never folding an ace. I don't know, but being short... I prefer to, uh, either jump the flop. I would probably check jump at flop. Uh, but then on the turn, we, we cannot improve. It's just gonna be a blow. I mean, we still have a gut shot, but just one card to come. Have very, uh... Chances. Got sixteen bigs. Open. Um, call. The four. Final four three calls. Yeah, we just jumped king five suited versus here. Fault. Then he priced in when he see bets. He didn't see bet though, he checked back. Hmm. This is a similar spot. But, but now he has fifteen bigs. So what do you guys do here? Gonna run it. You know what you guys do. Like, for ten bigs, it was a call before. Now, he's got fifteen bigs. What is going on? Putting to what? Point two? Two? Fault, right? This here, coming. Let's assume he's, uh... Check. Jams, ten bigs. Hands. Has fifteen. Oh... As ju- Hmm. Maybe... Ten bigs, you know. To the end now. Very low. Fault, to be honest. One point three. The fault. All fives. Find out if matrix... Fault or folded. Yeah. Nice. Didn't remember this one. Oh. Ace. Probably. (cough) Jump. Fault. Double check. Wait, did this guy go all in as well? Oh, this guy went all in. Definitely a fault, but... Yes, you... Faults. Like one hundred percent. I'm... Being... Kind of... Thing is, uh, what I noticed that... These sizes, people just don't raise fault enough. You can even raise fault as, even thirteen big blinds, you can this fault. Raise to two, and then you just fold. Because you... Ah, okay. Ooh. Four. Ace nine suited, it, oh! Call, but it's... Is ten. One point nine to two point four. Let's see. We are those, the Rangers. Jack. Ooh, a king ten. Legend. I think I would make... Five bigs, so maybe he thought it's a good opportunity to triple up or just... Most of the times he's... All bigs now. Fault. Yeah, I remember this one. I saw the flop and I was shaking, like, no, this is the worst flop possible, he's free rolling. But then we somehow... See, like, jack nine, cut off. Ten big blinds. Yeah, it's a fault. Raise your edges, all this one. It's like, like, jack ten off, jump. And... This, I'm taking, so... I mean, ten bigs, I know it's a fault, but... Bigs forty-one. This, this... Win thirty percent of our two. But maybe, maybe this is... Maybe this is, uh, yeah. Jack ten, uh, is a jump. There we are. Maybe we are the bubble or something. Oh. Jump. Deep. The fault. Pretty sure... Pretty sure I fold again here. Pretty sure I would, uh, fault, but... Think I need, old blind make me wanna jump, but... Line's still calling wide, so... This tens a fault. Uh, take the ten percent. Percent. Even, even with this crazy ranges, I don't, I don't ever think he's jamming king seven suited. Don't think he's... Maybe king nine. King, jack off. Like, let's take raise your edge. Little position, as it says here. Take the raise your edge. Raise your edge, yeah. Raise your edge says... Coming. But doesn't jump. And he doesn't. This is the... Blinds. I'll give it. Putting to the raise your... This... But calling ace, jack off. But I don't know. It could even fold his... You also have worry about... How it's working. Up with that. But I don't know, seven point eight, I think I would... I'm pretty happy with fault here. Uh... What do you call here in game? Look at his stats and adjust. About forty-seven. Uh, like... If I have a, if I know that guy is very loose, I made level, you know... Two fold six, fives. But we... I think I, I think I fo, I also folded in. Sometimes I could even le, let a jack off go, but the fact that we're below ten big blinds, I think I would call it's jump. Like, if I was eleven big blinds or twelve, and let... Yeah, ju, uh, just forty-seven hands. Like, I don't have a lot of hands on anyone. Uh, mostly because these are new stakes and play... Uh, mostly because these are new stakes I'm playing. You treat this as a... Or even jam, or... Ins. But this guy, man, the dream, he's got under the gun, he's on top of his range. Him. Up, up call. 10. This is Kaddov. Don't think he ju- Up. Queen, Jack, hand. Left with three big blinds. Up. We manage five. I, I'm not even gonna look there, it's quick hand because... And up. Hand. Dream. 3.77 bigs and duds. Overcard. Double up, triple up. Okay, uh, Jack 9, 10 bigs, take it out. Ooh! It's a slam dunk, uh, open jam. You can't even, you can't even go, you can't even jam... King, King Dus off, Queen 4 off plus, Jack 7 off, 10 7 off plus, 9 7, 8 7, and course, Dus is plus. All the aces, all the a6s. King Dus suited plus, Queen Dus suited plus, Jack Dus suited plus, 10 3 suited plus, 9 5 suited plus, 8 5 plus, 8 4 suited plus, 6 4 plus. Like, you even jam 5 3 suited. So you're jamming, uh, 60% of your range. Even if you're jamming... What's good about this? Even though you're jamming, uh... Though you're jamming... Versus... Though he's jamming 60... All... Even though he's jamming 5 3 suited, he folded 5 3. A good thing either. Though he jams... Jack Dus suited, fold up to Jack 6. And still, this kind of, uh, I think this is kind of... Push, because population don't call in Dus off. They do, they fold even. Again, King 4 maybe. I start calling... In a... Fold. Call it enough. Call Jack 6. Of... What? Am I muted? Or maybe I'm away from the, from the microphone, shit. Yeah, I think my microphone does that. I ordered a new one, but... Kind of, uh, late. The dream flop. There you go, King Dus suited. But even with this flop, we're still... Still... Ash. Ash. Fold. Of 10. Wow. Yeah, I'm playing. Yeah, it's not picking up because I have it here and I'm, I was leaning that way. Thanks for letting me know, by the way. Hey, uh, I think this is a, this is a tough spot. Well, because we re-jam, hold here. With it. Not sure if ICM is in play here. ICM, we do re-jam. Oh, Happy Gaylike, that's good to have you, man. Is that really you? Is that really you? How you doing? How's the grind going? Still crushing? Oh, thank you, man. Thank you. Yeah, we did, uh, we finally got there, you know, with the 50 to 10,000 dollar challenge. Finally got there like a couple of weeks ago. Didn't see any, uh, blog updates on there, so I thought you quit streaming and I just found you. The thing is, I did quit streaming, uh, because of, you know, the COVID and everything had a huge effect on my... My work. Uh, but now I am an ACR stormer and that also gives me the opportunity to be a full-time streamer. And, uh, I'm just loving it, loving it. Um, I can, um, you know, I can focus... Bogger a little bit more than before. It's good, it's good to have you, man. Good to have you. I was, uh, now that you mentioned the, the blog, um, I started writing a couple of times, uh, but then I just... I just, uh, didn't, didn't finish, uh, what, what I wanted to write, so it's, it's, it's on my to-do list for sure. My to-do. So we're just having a study session here, you know, uh, my, uh, my recent, uh... Win on the Big Fish 650. Just studying some sports. You missed, thank you, man. Thank you. Uh, thanks, thanks. It was tough, it was tough to, uh, to keep up sometimes because, you know... Uh... Life happens. And, uh, but I, I, I always enjoyed writing, but the, the last couple of times I just posted the results. I didn't put so much story, but now I have a lot of stories to tell, so... I'm, I might, I may get back to it. So we have this board here, I'm not really sure... Not really sure which part... The game we... But I, but judging from my tips, maybe this is final two tables or final three. So we have... Under, uh, actually I'll call this little position, mm? It's high Jago, right? A jam. So what do you do? What do you do here, out of the blue? Let's have your input since we have you here. For those of you that don't know, uh, Happy Gaylike, he's part of the DW community. And, uh, he's a crusher and he's like someone I always... He was writing a blog, well, as I was, in the DW community and, uh, he's someone I really admire because of his work ethic and the way he, uh, uh... Understands Bogger as... Not only as, uh, you know... Uh, the game, but as the mental aspect of the game. That's like the foundation of, uh, for me, that's the foundation of, I get... Uh, able to become great player. How you... Mentally... Understand this game, how to mentally, uh... Substain. And one of the things that stuck with me, uh, that he said in one of his, uh, probably comments or blog updates is that we humans are not made in a way to... Uh... To be, um... To be able to take what comes with Bogger and we have to work for that. Am I right? Uh, two tables should, uh, just be going broke with the chance. Sure what I did here, but I did. But I'm, uh, we're still flipping, so glad I did. Galan en ektariemu, da edo gamu study session. Yeah, I remember, you remember? It was, it was, uh, you know, lots, lots of the things, lots of the things, uh... Uh, that I was reading on your blog updates were like hitting the right spots, man. Big value in reading those blog updates and, and that's why I'm always forever grateful to the DW community and STP. Uh, because I got a lot of support and, uh... And I still do. Like, I have Zombie who helped me a lot, Zidane. Uh, I met Ben who is also streaming and we are now, uh, the four of us are now, um... We are constantly, uh, on a Discord, uh, you know, um... Thread or call, I should say, or merged chat and we also, uh, study sessions together. So I can't thank, uh, the DW community for everything. Lost the flip, we have, still, we're still in, oh. Fold. Great spot. Fold. We will jam. Raise your edges, uh, 10 bigs from high Jack. 7, 8, it's a jam. I don't think I do it often enough. No, I mean, 7, 8, 9. You guys ever jam here on the board? Probably, I probably do it on, uh, at all, definitely bad turn. But high Jack. Now ICM looks like a fold. Like, even in ICM, when would you jam this one? Would you jam button or, or, or small blind? Like, we have, yeah, I mean, it could definitely hurt anyone. Don't have a lot of hands on them. Button, yeah, feels right to me as well. Yasu got sumu. Up kaze. Mathima. 10 7. Hold. Dead. Hold. How we are? We are, how many people are we now? 5? 4? Probably this final two tables. Probably final two tables. Here it was, here. Right? Like or hate that? 7 75, like... Right? Yeah, I mean, I don't hate his region. Would you jam King 10 suited? What is your, uh... It's the bottom of my, my King X. Yeah, like I would fold King, I would probably fold King 9 suited. I think King 9 suited seems close, but folded. Definitely, uh, jamming King, King Queen off. That. King Jago. Yeah, I also jam King Jago. I fold. I think I fold up to Ace 8 of... Maybe Ace 8 is... 8 is close, Ace 9 or 5 jam. And all the pairs. King 8 suited looks around the margin. So you would jam King 9 suited? Out. Got there. Yeah, in ICM, outside of and nine goes in. 2. Oh. Went for the raise. Still jamming. Very sexy little bet, take it down. Glad I went for the raise now. What do you feel about that? How do you feel? Like 245. So this probably final table bubble, right? So, they jam, he jams and Kyri jumps and just fold. How do you feel about the raise here? King jam, basics. Sure, I think open jam is the more standard approach, total big blind. I probably thought that, you know, being at the final table bubble, this guy jams and then this guy jams. But I could probably make it be uh, of 2x. 0.5 or looks like I'm all in. Jamming is because you hate to uh, you hate to be uh, you hate having to, you know, being, for king queen to jam. Have to. Yasu, Gary, m galespera, faristo, agama kanum estadi session. Hard to argue, true. Do you, do you ever jam or do you, do you defend, play post flop? Spot. Because we in my mind here, I, these spots, I'd rather to call, see the flop. Kind of always regjam this. Okay. I did. But I thought I would call here because sometimes I just call, like, even though, I mean, we don't want to go, we don't want to get busted before, you know, guys, and there are a couple of shorties on the other tables as well. Uh, don't we ever uh, take this into consideration? Of course, on the other hand, he's, he should be ju- uh, opening wide, right? Probably I thought of that. Try to regjam as much as possible versus a chip leader. Because he's opening wide, right? Weird. Because playing post flop versus uh, chip leader out of position is very difficult, so regjamming to profit on fold equity re-flop is more attractive. That's, that's, that's very, that's very true. Because he is gonna be pushing us. Even if we, even, even with a queen high flop, it would be putting a lot of pressure on us. Out of position, true. Kalos to fiesta, alispera fiesta, ganis. I don't think I jumped this. I just go. Sure, maybe. Uh, 54 off, we jam, yeah. Even though he's I think it's a jam, because we're playing like 6 effective. Uh, raise your edge, 10 effective, raise your edge says it's a fold. We're not 10 effective, we're 6 effective. Uh, Gary, well, what uh, what Happy and but he has, he, he, he has to call to take you out. He can uh, he can make more damage to us if we play post flop, this is what happy gay like he means. So, let's say we call and let's say he has a hand like uh, Jack 9, okay? We call and the flop is king 4 duse. We check, he bets. He bets, you know, what are we gonna do? We will not realize our equity and we have to fold, right? Because we cannot float. So we just jam. If it's uh, and if he has a better hand, then it's our time to go. Yeah, yeah, I should do that. 92%? He pretty much jam everything. Pretty much jam everything. Or 40%. He's calling queen 5 su- calling king or seems reasonable. I'm surprised he is folding too. Fold, raise. Top lever. Final table, it. Oh, look at that, that's so funny. This guy has 0.01. Dollym. And he has aces. Hasn't survived the next one, but that was a pretty good flop for them. So, okay. Uh, players, we have 17 bigs. Bigs. ICM. Or, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a little bit more, we're already past, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a little bit more. Uh, and take a, take a 20 minute break before I start the grind. Heads up. I probably, I will probably do it with the zombie somewhere. All days duse. Rim. Um, call in. For us. Also for us. In time I was playing the, the final table bubble of the 33 dollar big fish, we bubbled. Oh, by the way, by the way, Happy, I, I, there is a hand, I may need your opinion, man. There's a, there's a really awkward spot, gonna probably have to find it. Gonna need your opinion. Okay, here it is, I can There we go. Uh, are you still here? So, this is the, this is the, I don't know if you can see this, let me Oh, alright, this is the um, this is the final table bubble of the 33 dollar big fish and we have a short stack here with like 6 bigs. I mean, effectively shoving under the gun. Uh, this 8 bigs, blinds. And we have somewhere around 30 big blinds, I think we have exactly 30 big blinds. Looking uh, and we have jacks. What do you do here? He, I mean, he's uh, he's got some call faults and he also has some traps. He do with the jacks. Oh, I hated it too. And you don't want to, you can't call, you can't fold. My instinct said, Zombie said, jamming is the best. Uh, Ben said, jamming, Zidane said, jam. My god at the game said uh, this, I'm afraid this could be a trap and I, I remember, I don't remember if I said it, but I thought, we have 30 big blinds. Going on the final table of the big fish with 30 big blinds is really good. You know, the 33 dollar big fish, really good to go on the final table with 30 big blinds. And uh, even if I make a mistake here, I can still I have a good chance of winning. If I, if I make a mistake and fold, you know, the best hand, I still have good chance of winning the tournament. And then I thought about it a little bit and I said, well, does have some call faults, nines or sevens, I think he jams nines, but 7 sixes probably. Ace jack off, ace queen off. And so, like my stream freeze. So, I was like, okay guys, I'm just jamming here if it's my time to go, my time to go. And I decided to jam and he had aces and I lost, but like, what do you think? Exactly. Big stacks! What's up? So, I mean, now you know, but and to be honest, in similar spots, I, I just jumped and I go default. And I don't want to, you know, I don't want to, to judge um, after I know what happened, you know, make the decision. But, do you ever make a fault, make a fault like this for the sake of the future game? Like, is this something you would be considering? Or do you just look at the spot? If it's a good shoving spot, you just jam, like like, do you ever consider that in your game? Like, I have an edge and I'm, I'm, I'm uh, I'm throwing away my edge, oh. If I lose this hand. Well, this is the final table bubble, so if this guy gets busted, we, we walk in the final table with 30 big blinds. If I get busted here, I, I, I take uh, home 100 50 dollars and there is 3000 up top. Like, this and I can, like, if I just fold and sit out, I'm not gonna do that, but if I just fold and sit out, I'm probably gonna make 500 plus 600 dollars more. Because I don't think about that, but would you prefer to sacrifice this spot for working in the final table with 30 big blinds? Uh, I, I think I was like fourth out of 10. Yeah, he does have some fall, call faults, ever. 7, 9s, ace 10, ace queen, king queen suited, king jack. King, queen, 2, that king, jack. Yeah, he only traps aces and kings, which we unblock. I think he re-jumps queens. Or re-raise because he has 38 big. But, uh, but I like the. I like the fact that as soon as you've seen the hand, you said, I hate this pot, you know? Like. You cannot love it. Exactly. If it was tens. If it was tens, no? Uh, I think it's an easier decision. But jacks or queens? It's jacks. Jacks always sucks. David's very much, I might think to fold, yeah. Yeah, as mid-stuck playing in big pots multi-way pre-flop is always shit. Exactly. That's, that's the. That's the, and, and you know that people will pand a lot. They do pand a lot in. Final tables. So. Like. I don't know if it's a good idea to print. I mean, there was a similar spot, the same session that I folded jacks. Uh, uh, so. And, and I had the, the best hand. And the winning hand, but it doesn't matter. I still think it was a fault though. But, uh, but having the chance to walk in the final table with 30 bigs, I think that was, uh. Maybe, maybe this is something I should be considering. And. But it's a, it's definitely one of the toughest sports for this month for me. Yeah, at this, yeah, at the 16th, yeah, you see that a lot. They, there are three ways to play jacks and all of them are wrong. Alright, let's check out this one. Uh. We are the chip leader here. Opens. Have ace 9 off. Start my own grind. Good luck, man. Good luck. It was, it was great to, to see you. Great to see you. I think I did. Oh no, I folded. I folded. I think I, I think I did take some, uh, probably I folded because this guy does not fold to 3. But, but I did take some spots later on. See you, man. Take care. Good luck with the grind and I promise I will be writing, updating my blog soon. Uh, let's get bit. And open chip leader here. Probably 2x. I have to go 3. Uh, perceive it here and take it down. I mean, you're, as a chip leader, you're printing to open. Pretty wide. Again, 2.3, I don't like it. I'm going for 2x. But maybe, maybe 2.3 sometimes isn't A because. Just, just, uh, they just fold. They should be folding. I could, I could also open this. But I probably, probably didn't. Because everyone asks, asks. Good thing I did. Yep. Fold. Definitely. If it was him, I would probably fold. Having the chip leader. Check. This is an interesting one. So, I, limp, falls. Add one big blind. Falls. Check. Bet. I decided to go for the check raise here. So. Because I still have, you know. And what is he gonna do with a 10x or jackx? He can't call the check raise. Why you don't wanna play a lot of pods? Chip leader, he's gonna push you. I like the way. Or can raise any, anything. We're printing. Somehow. Uh, I, reason I did call. Uh. Check here. Just a 8. 2 versus. Out. Pairs. Fold now. Could you even size it down? Go. If here. Not the chip leaders anymore. Big. Limp call. I'll fold here. Uh, I limp, I limped, I limped. Jam. If he raises, he checks. Check this one. Checks back. I'll do. 9x, 7x. Folks. Okay. Couple of hands, curve. Stop. Call it. Because I'm gonna start the grind soon. Call. 5. 3. Check. Testing. Check. Back. Check again. Checks. This is a good card for us to bet big and get called. Bet. Could go even bigger here. Call. Call with 10. I need. For this one. Raise, jam, re-jam. We do have to fold. And this was the hand that if we called, we just win it right there. It was the 6 of 7. Both have a queen. The call with a 3. Check. Get out. Raise and 3x, call. Bet. Call, raise. Call. Survives this 2. What's up, Kev? Doing? Have a tournament review. It? We're heads up and. Limp. Call, I. Fold. Survives again. Fold here, course. Another, another time that. Hand. Raise in the shove. Time out. So we're heads up. Alright. Uh, we're gonna be, uh, reviewing the heads up one other time. Thanks everyone for, uh, sticking. The boring, uh, side of poker. Uh, I'm gonna be uploading this, as always, on, uh, our YouTube channel. And, uh, right now, we will be, I will take a small break and then I'll be back for the grind. Good luck to all of you guys and I hope to see you in maybe half an hour. Take care. Uh, let's host someone. Yeah, let's host Johnny. Johnny? What you doing? Alright, let's go for a rate. Okay, guys. Uh, I will see you in a bit. Almost 5 o'clock, maybe 6 o'clock. So, maybe in an hour, I will open for, uh, one of the last, uh, sessions of the month. Hoping to close it with a couple of more trophies. So I'll see you in a bit. Take care. Let's show some love to Johnny's. Go. There we go. Alright, guys. Peace. Take care.